To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I welcome everyone here this evening. And Mr. Latchmore, would you call a roll call attendance, please?
Trustee Pelkey?
Here.
Trustee Menard?
Here.
Trustee Southwick?
Here.
Trustee Arnold?
Present.
Mayor LaBoutte?
Here.
I have a sign up sheet and no one signed up for the speak to address the board this evening, so we'll vote to the minutes of the May fifteenth regular board meeting. All the trustees should have a copy of these minutes in their packet. If there's no questions or amendments, then I would like the motion to accept these minutes and go forward.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as printed?
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the May fifteenth regular minute meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Bills, treasurer, eternal?
We have one deletion this evening. It's on page four. It's the LeBarre J C, the amount of fifteen ninety-nine. Just remove that for now, please.
I need a motion on the floor to accept the bills. If there's any questions, we can discuss them now. If not, then I need a motion to accept them and move forward.
I make a motion to pay the bills as amended?
Second.
All those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Correspondents, Mr. Latchmore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three things under correspondence. I received an email dated May twenty-ninth, and the email is from Brittany Turner, and she says, "Good morning, gentlemen. I have been patiently awaiting to hear an update from you regarding my petition. I'm under impression that the next step will be public form. When can I expect this to occur? Obviously, it's too late to get chicks this year, but I want to be prepared for next year when this is approved." And she said, "Thank you in advance. Have a nice day," Brittany Turner.
In regards to that, I would like to comment to the public, and especially to Ms. Turner. There is several things on the plate of our legal counsel, Mr. Mernane. He's had enough time to do some of these things. I'm a little disappointed, and I'm a little upset that these things haven't been done. I'm the mayor. I normally would accept all and any responsibility for these things moving forward, but in this case, my hands are tied. I will, once again, try to reach our legal counsel to push this effort forward. There is no reason for me or this board to delay this public hearing. It's up to the residents of this village to decide on this issue, and we intend to bring this issue up to a public hearing at some point. We first need the verbiage from our legal counsel to change the existing law that's on the books prohibiting this, these fowl from within the village. And once that is put on my desk or the administrator's desk, we will bring this forward, and we'll have something for this board to vote on, and then it will be going out to the public. They will be invited to have a public discussion, whether they're for it or against it, and at some point after that, this board will move forward and vote whether to approve or not having allowing chickens within our village boundaries. I don't mean to throw Mr. Mernane underneath the bus, but facts are facts. I've contacted him on at least three different occasions in regards to this, and I'm a little disappointed. I'll say it again, that this hasn't been done. I will continue to push Mr. Mernane to do this, and we'll try to get this done. And while I'm on the subject, I, what, after being, this being said, I know some of you might say, "Well, just replace Mr. Mernane." Well, many of you may not know, many attorneys in our area do not deal with municipal law. Very difficult to replace an attorney with municipal law. You have a civil problem, a criminal problem, a vehicle traffic problem, you can get any attorney out of the sun. But municipal law is an exception that a lot of attorneys don't deal with, so we have to kind of deal with Mr. Mernane, and we're hoping that his actions will improve and make this board move forward in regards to this issue. Thank you. Mr. Latchmore, continue.
The next correspondence that I received, the board can recall at the last meeting, trustee Pelkey brought up the new rent that Verizon Wireless was presenting to the village board, and it was mentioned that because it had already been budgeted for the eighteen hundred and some odd dollars for this budget year, that the board did not want to consider decreasing their rent. So I reached out to Verizon Wireless. I expressed our concerns, and they turned around and offered a supplemental offer to the village, which I presented to each one of the trustees. So the new rent amount that they're offering would be one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per month, beginning on June first of twenty-four, and then, as it indicates, then there would be ten percent every five years, and the next increase wouldn't be until June of two thousand twenty-nine.
As far as I'm concerned, I'll be the first to speak out on this. We have a, we have a contract that's valid into two thousand twenty-four. I see no reason to change it. I'll let any trustee comment at this point. As far as I'm concerned, we based our budget going forward based on this income, and I have seen no justification why we should reduce this. Any comments from the board?
No, I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah, I agree, but I, yeah, I think they can do a little better on their figures, too.
They need to at least keep it where it is, and then we'll talk about a percent.
I'd like to have someone come sit in my office and explain to me versus sending me a, an email or a letter. I mean, this does, this gives very little information for me to understand why they want this done or anything else. So, I mean, I would like to have a conversation with somebody, but maybe that's not possible. But at this point, in my opinion, we have a legally binding contract with Verizon, and I think we should hold them to it and go forward.
I agree.
Twenty twenty-four will be here before we know it, and that's the proper time to negotiate.
Exactly. When the contract expires, it's time to negotiate again. But right now, we have something in place.
Yeah, even if they get back to us in January, we still have six months before to finish the contract.
Exactly. So I, unless there's a difference in opinion, I think I want the administrator to send a letter back to Verizon saying that, at this point, we want them to adhere to the contract that exists, and we're not going to deviate from that contract.
Will do.
Okay, Mr. Latchmore?
And the last thing that I have is, I received a letter from Mr. LeBlanc, and from, from Ron, and I provided a copy of this letter to each board member. And it's, please find enclosure, that outlines my offer to negotiate with the village, Ross's Point for the parcel land adjacent to his property. The board can recall, Mr. LeBlanc came in front of the board, I believe it was probably three or four board meetings ago, where he wanted to acquire some adjacent land, his property for his, for his business. And you'll see that the offer to purchase the land on page number two and the amount that he's willing to purchase the property for.
Yes, sir. Do we have any idea what this property is value that?
Well, in my own personal opinion, I, I think what the village should, should do would be to have an appraisal done of this parcel, and the appraisal would have to be done at the expense of the person that's acquiring, showing interest to acquire the property, and then if the board considers that they want to sell. First of all, does the board want, does the board want to sell this property? Is this something that you really want to do? And if it is, we get it appraised, and that would be at the expense of the purchaser to pay for the appraisal, and it would have to be said that it would have to be sold for no less than his, than his offer, but for the, and no less than the appraised value. So what I'm saying is, if the appraised property at ten, but his offer's at twenty, you'd have, you'd take the higher of the two.
Which makes sense if, if we're interested in selling the property.
Correct.
Right.
But if you, if it's not.
We said before that we were, that we were interested in selling that lease.
Well, that property doesn't really do help the village out in any way. It was an old trailer court that we ended up acquiring because it went up for taxes. And we do have a right of way along the building for our outfall line that goes from the wastewater plant down to the lake. That's the only thing that we would have to keep is in that right of way, and Mr. LeBlanc put that in writing, that he understands that there would be a right of way through there. We have to maintain it. We have to mow it, and I think it's a good idea, if we're never going to use it, to put it back on the tax roll.
Right.
Because we own all the wastewater facility up in the back, all them fields. I mean, we have plenty of land.
Right.
No, that, that does make sense, but I, I think the best thing with the administrator, what he said is, get an independent, somebody to assess that property value. That way, we're, let Mr. LeBlanc pay for it. He's that interested in buying it, and that way, we're getting a fair market value for that piece of property.
The only other concern, the only other concern that I have is, I know one of the other neighbors showed interest in it also. What, is there a way that, I mean, I'd like to make it fair to whoever wants to buy this property. I mean...
Well, I think we've got to be careful because we, before we enter into an agreement with one individual, and if it's village property, we, we should probably put it out for, in the paper, saying it's for sale, or, or put it out there where more than one individual could have access to buying this property.
But we do that.
You need to get it appraised first.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you need, or you need to get it appraised.
We're gonna get it appraised first to see what exact actual value of the property is, but I don't think we should just limit it to one person, because then we might put ourselves to a, a problem. We have a question in the back?
On this piece of property, I had talked to a previous board nine, ten years ago about purchasing that property, and I was told that A, had to go up for public auction, B, it had to be sold for no less than appraised value. They could not give me an appraised value at the time, so they went back to what it was assessed at back in the eighties, and the assessment was outrageous. So they put that piece of property up for a public auction, and no one went, no one bid on it.
So, so Brad, that's what the village would be doing. It would be appraised first, so can't be sold for any less than the appraised value. Okay? The village will have to pay for that, but then when they, when somebody comes to acquire it, you tell them that they have to pay for the, for the appraisal, just like you'd make them pay for any other expenses that village may have.
Bush, I wish the last board would have did that. Well, last board back, whatever, nine years ago or so.
But it has to be advertised because it's, it's village property, and then, of course, it has to go to the, to the highest bidder, or the highest, shouldn't say bidder, the highest offer.
Offer.
Over assessed value.
Because it has to be the minimum of the assessed value.
The minimum of assessed value or higher.
And that, and that's why I said, if, if the assessed value comes in at ten, and he has an offer of twenty, then you would take the higher offer of, because it's above the assessed value.
Right. They came, they came back to me with an assessed value of like seventy-eight thousand dollars. I was blown away. That was maybe what it was when they had twelve trailers on there, but...
They didn't do a current assessment?
No.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
But it's just like, if it needs to be surveyed out, that becomes the expense of the purchasers. It's not going to be the expense of, of the village, and that's the way that it happens.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make it known, because I, I was interested in that property before, and I was kind of shut down by the village.
And I think what we're gonna do is, once we get an appraisal, is, we're not gonna just offer it to one individual. We're gonna put it out to see if there's other buyers that are possibly interested in this property, and as trustee Pelkey said, we're gonna go for at least a minimum of what it'd be assessed value and go from there, and the higher bids will, will take place.
Appraised value.
The board, excuse me?
Appraised value, yes.
The appraised value, excuse me. That will, is already indicated that we're willing to sell the property. So I think we start off getting the appraisal and go from there. Okay?
Yep.
Anything else, Mr. Latchmore?
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I need a motion to accept resolution twenty-three dash thirteen, a proxy for NEUA. That would be our voting proxy, because we're a member of that association. And if nobody has any questions, I need a motion to, to allow a proxy vote for that.
I'll make a motion to allow the proxy vote.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of resolution twenty-three thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. I also have resolution twenty-three dash fourteen, a proxy for NMPA, which is also, we're a member of, as for Ross's Point, the village power. They would also involve a proxy vote. Everybody should have a copy of that also in their packet, and if there's no questions, then I need a motion to accept that proxy vote also.
I'll make a motion to accept the proxy vote of twenty twenty-three dash fourteen.
I'll second.
All those in favor of accepting resolution twenty-three dash fourteen, the proxy for NMPA, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The next resolution is resolution twenty-three dash fifteen, bad debt. This has been, from my understanding, as I'm new to being the mayor for a year and a half, that there's been a number of people over the years that haven't paid their electrical bill, and for lack of any legal way to recover the money, the board has accepted this, this debt and wrote it off. I'm not saying I, I like it, but that's just the way it is. The treasurer, something to say?
We still, we still continue to try and collect the money.
Excuse me?
As we still try, we still try to continue to collect the money.
Yes.
This is just to clean up the books.
Yeah.
And this is a budget item that we have in the budget this year.
This would prohibit, if somebody who owes us money, this for public knowledge, and I'll let you confirm that, I said, that anybody who owes us money cannot open another electrical account until they pay that open account a hundred percent, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And, and what I meant to clarify is, there was options that we could have taken some of these people with small claims, but the, the, the cost of that and the time consuming that for one individual would be prohibitive. So we haven't pursued that. So basically, I need the board to, to come up with a vote to accept resolution twenty-three fifteen, to accept this bad debt.
I make a motion that we accept the resolution twenty-three fifteen and write it off on our books.
I second.
All those in favor of accepting resolution twenty-three fifteen, the bad debt, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Do you roll call? That does need to be a roll call.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. I apologize. Roll call vote, Mr. Latchmore.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor LaBoutte?
Aye. And the resolution twenty-three fifteen has been accepted and passed by board. I also have a village code for the dogs. The town of Champlain has adopted a law, and a more prohibitive law, I believe, more comprehensive law for controlling dogs within the municipalities. We've had an opportunity to review it. I think it's a very good updated dog law. If there's anybody who wants to discuss it, I'm willing to do that. If not, then we would be voting on to accept, to make the town of Champlain, the village of Ross's Point, and the village of Champlain all have adopted the same dog law, so the dog officer that works for us would all be in the know for the same law. Any, any questions on that? If not, then I need a vote to accept the village code, the dog laws.
What we're gonna have to do is, it's gonna be amending the local law, so we'll have to set it up for a public hearing.
We have to set up a public hearing to accept, just for a change in the dog law?
Yes.
That's amazing. Well, I just got educated. I didn't think something like that, I didn't think it was to do it.
You're amending a law, so it needs to be set to public.
Okay, so we'll set up for a public hearing. You will send out a notice for that?
I, I will.
Do you need a motion for that? I'll make a motion to set up a public hearing for the local dog law, number ten A of two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second.
All those in favor of setting up a public hearing for the dog law, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Mr. Latchmore, you're authorized to set up and have, for the public dog law. We have, next on the list, the water plant grant that would be done by, I think it's partner of the Buddhists.
Yeah.
We need to authorize them to work for, on our behalf, to apply for this grant. Any questions on that?
This is a state grant, correct?
This is a state one, so this would be our third round.
Okay.
And their cost for doing the scope of the project is approximately twenty-three hundred dollars. I'm, I'm gonna let the public know this right now. As, as the trustees know, we applied for the federal grant through Elise Stefanic's office, and it looks like right now, the village of Ross's Point is very highly, it's probability of receiving three million dollars for per grant. So if we can get the seven million or eight from here, we'll be in very good standings to build a new water plant.
It's worth spending the twenty-three hundred dollars to end up with what we could end up with.
Correct.
If we don't...
Then we're not getting it. We're not even gonna be in the ballpark.
So, I'll make a motion to have the mayor sign this contract with Barton LeDouxis for the twenty-three hundred dollars.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Latchmore?
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor LaBoutte?
Aye. The ayes have it, so we have authorized by the board, you can send a letter, Mr. Latchmore, authorizing partners to pursue this grant on behalf. And lastly, with deep regard, I accept the resignation of Jerry Pivetta. He was a good employee who worked for the village. He, he's indicated that he's bettered himself with a new position. You can't fault anyone for trying to better themselves and find a better job. Unfortunately, we could not match the wages or the benefit levels that he went to, but on behalf of the board, I wish Jerry all the best. So I need a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll second that.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation.
And Mr. Arnold, second. All those in favor of accepting Jerry Pivetta's resignation, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and that's all I have. Trustee Arnold, do you have anything?
The fire department, they would like to know if the village crew or somebody could paint the lettering on the fire department. The letters are pretty shabby, and also the steel beams are all rusty at the bottom and stuff, so if somebody on the village crew could paint them or whatever. And also at the railroad station, I got a quote from Stix and Stuff for storm windows, but I'm gonna wait. I got another quote coming from, another window company anyhow.
Adam Glass.
Adam Glass, yes, thank you. Adam Glass, and it won't be until next week, or next week, and so I'll bring it up to the next meeting. The windows in the railroad station, one of them, the glass is just about ready to fall out, and it's only single pane glass, and it's, it's ruined the window. You know, it should be thermal painted there. And also, I'd like to thank Post nine twelve. They invited me to their yearly party, and they gave me award for citizen of the year. Just to let everybody know.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Trustee Menard, do you have anything?
Just one, one thing, question, well, with Mr. Pivetta's resignation. Chris, have we heard anything back from, like, the higher ups about, like, trying to support the local villages or municipalities for funds to, like, we, we keep losing employees left and right, and we can't compete with these big corporations?
Well, we, we had, the mayor, trustee Pelkey, myself had a conversation today, and they convinced us that there's really nothing out there that, that can help us, other than each municipality's gonna have to increase its...
And that, that was the theme. The village of Ross's Point is not unique. All these, all these municipalities are running into the same problem with wage scale, and the, the answer was, well, if you want to get people to come and work for you, you have to wa, raise their wages. In order to do that, you gotta raise the taxes. So it's a domino effect. So, you know, if you want good news, some of the bad news is gonna come with it, too. So we're gonna have to look at that down the road.
It's just too bad we keep losing really good employees.
Train, train people, and then we have to retrain them. I agree with you.
Which costs us even more money that we don't want.
Exactly.
That's all I have for this evening.
Trustee Pelkey, you have anything?
Yes, I have two things. Talked to the public work supervisor. They're gonna start their paving. They've been prepping for Woodhaven, Academy Street by the school, and Manor Drive. So they should be paving this, this week or next week, whenever the county is due to come here, but they've been cutting the rebates in the driveways and fixing the manholes and getting ready. The second thing I have is, the Fourth of July Committee is asking the board if they can do a coin drive this Saturday on the tent down in front of the rec center for funds to support the committee for the bans and all the expenses.
I don't, I don't see a problem with that. That's...
Do we need a motion for that? I'll make a motion.
They have the proper signage.
Yeah, they borrow the signs from Albert.
Yep.
And they wear their vest, and they're pretty much on their own if something does happen to them, and they know that. They just, you know, they want the board to be aware of, they used to do it in front of the fire station, but they didn't want people to think that they're giving the donations to the fire department, they're giving the donations to the village, Fourth of July Committee members to support the, all the bans and the activities and the expenses, the tents, rentals of the tents, you know, whatever they have to do and stuff.
I make a motion that we allow the Fourth of July Committee to run a coin drive this Saturday.
Second.
All those in favor of allowing the Ross's Point Fourth of July Committee to run a coin drive on Saturday, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The board has approved the coin drive for the Ross's Point Fourth of July Committee.
What time is that gonna be, Brian? I think at nine, nine to one or two?
Nine to two.
Nine to two?
Nine to two. I think so. I think it was nine to two.
Anything else, trustee Pelkey?
No, that's all I have.
Trustee Southwick?
As previously noted by the administrator, the dugouts needed to have locks and combination locks and doors added to them. That has been done, so thank you to the administrator for getting that, getting that started, and big thank you to the public work crews for getting that done so quickly. I walked by them earlier today, and they look like they'll do the job.
Well, I, I hate to bust anybody's bubble, but we've had trouble in the last week or so. We've had some youths that have figured out a way to get in, climb over the fence and into the dugouts, and we've had some damage to the bathrooms, some unnecessary foolishness, and I will put this out here on camera. If, I have talked to the administrator, and I intend to talk to the board. If we have to, and I will try to get grant money for it, we can probably, hopefully include it with the grant money we're gonna get from Mr. Jones, but we were gonna put cameras up on this building and around our, our fields. And if somebody is caught... And if somebody is caught damaging our field or our property, I will tell you in front of this camera that I will have them prosecuted to the fullest. This is absolutely absurd when you have all the goodies in the world, so to speak. You have a rec center, a soccer field, a baseball field, a stage. We have something for a family in this village, and we have a few youths who go out of their way to damage it. And if that's what they wanna do, then I'll accommodate them by getting them arrested. And if that's what they want, they can count on it. And that's all I have to say in regards to that, because this is just absolutely foolishness to, I have no understanding of why somebody would just destroy something for no reason. I didn't mean to interrupt, but, Mr. Southwick.
If I may, if I can add, security cameras are very affordable, so this is absolutely something we can do.
It, it just irritates me that we've spent the money and the time to make these fields and these dugouts very, very nice for all these people and teams to come and play, and then we have one or two bad apples that's gotta destroy it for no reason. And I, like I said to you again, it irritates me to the point where I don't care who it is, they will be arrested. Anything else, Mr. Southwick? Court Officer Cooper, do you have anything you wanna report?
Nothing. The setup of our permit process is picking up quite a bit, but it's at that time of year or so. To be expected.
The only thing I, I would like to say is, next to O'Reilly's and those fields there, there, the, the grass is starting to get high again. Has, has anybody been sent a letter or contacted in regards to that?
I believe that some of that property, and I did check on that last year, if you remember. And I had the people from, from the dope store, they started mowing the field, which is to the west there. The other one, it's, I think all that property is in the hands of the county. And I have a couple pieces of property the same way in the village.
I, I know where the old convenience store was, as you first come into the village, that. But I don't know if, if the subsequent piece of property connected in between that restaurant and, and O'Reilly's. O'Reilly's, that piece of property, I don't know if that's belonged to the county. I think that's private ownership. So, I would ask you to check in to see who owns that property. And if you determine who it is, send them a letter. If that grass is about a foot to half to two feet tall, and all it's gonna do is create critters and other problems within our village boundaries. So, if you would do that, Mr. Cooper, I would appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll check on it first thing in the morning.
Thank you very much.
Did we check with the county to see if they can clean up that area?
I, we called them, but last year, and I, and that girl, I, the other piece down here.
Have you talked to anybody in Pacific in regards to the property that the county owns?
The only one I really ever talked to was Timmy. And he tells me it's in the hands of the county, and he doesn't, I don't. When you try to deal with him, I can call Mike down there, see, my girl, see what he can do.
Maybe when I get back to the office tomorrow, the next day, the administrator and I'll make some phone calls to see if we can talk to somebody from the county that's got a little bit of authority or power to see if we can get some of that cleaned up. There's small trees, the grass.
Let me confirm it in the first thing, though, John. Let me confirm who's the owner first thing in the morning.
We'll call our legislator, Mr. Captain.
Well, we gotta get something, because the first thing you come into the village, you see that, and it looks like hell. But anyway, anything you can do, Mr. Cooper? And like I said, the administrator and I'll try to get more information for you to help you get ahold of some people from the county and maybe get some of that cleaned up a little bit better.
Okay. So, if I confirm ownership, we'll do that.
Thank you.
On the corner of State and Delaware.
Yeah.
That, that's pretty long.
Yeah, I hung the hangers on it today, so we'll see. As you guys well on with Tuesday, the same parcels every year or so.
Well, we, we indicated that we were gonna enforce the laws. We indicated to, we're gonna give a warning, and we indicated after the warning, you were gonna issue citations. And we expect you, as a court officer, to do all the above.
I'm like, well, we've been informed. But I'll be honest with you, overall, the villages actually, actually were hit last year because I had a car on it from last year.
Well, in my book, it's very simple. You talk to the property owner, you give them a certain period of time to clean up the property. They don't do it, then you go back and visit them with some, some citations. And then they'll have to go to court and take care of it that way. So, you give them an opportunity right off the bat to clean up their property. Yeah, they're, just like a good neighbor should. And if they don't do it, then you're, you take your next step. And then, that's your, that's your job. Understood?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else?
I, I just want the board to note to the board that the auditors will be here on Wednesday and Thursday, so if there's any questions or anything.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public like to address the board before I close the meeting? If not, then I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the meeting is adjourned.